Katie, can you leave us to the pledge, please?
To the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have a moment of silence for men and women in the armed forces and for our first responders, also for the three sailors that were killed while training in the base in Pensacola, Florida, Chris Joshua Kayla Watson, he was U.S. Naval Academy, Airman Mohammed Smeen Hali, he was of St. Petersburg, Florida, who joined the Navy after graduating from high school last year, Airman Apprentice Cameron Scott Walters, 21, of Richmond Hill, Georgia.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think anybody signed it.
Okay. All right. I'd like to entertain a motion to add to the agenda, the appointment of a Sergeant of Arms.
Make that item...
Do I have a second?
Item seven?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item seven will make that?
Yep. Next is mayoral comments, real quick. Thank you, everybody, for coming. I hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving. I'd like to thank the Director of Coaching, Alex Mendoza, all the coaches, parents, and players for the successful season for the Impact United Soccer Club. The U-12 Boys and Girls ended up winning their division, so congratulations. I'd like to thank the New Milford Police Department for their stuff-for-cruiser event last Saturday, very successful, and I'd like to thank the Police Department, the men and women, for helping those less fortunate with toys and gifts for this upcoming holiday season. I'd like to thank VFW Commander Jim Delancey, American Leecher Commander Jeff McBriarty, for leading our Pearl Harbor Day service that we had. I'd also like to thank State Representative Bill Buckley, Chief Saruto, and Kathy Shimley for all their kind words and words about Pearl Harbor and those still missing in action. I'd like to thank Buck Ovuit for singing the National Anthem and Pat Maguire for the bagpipes, the Honor Guard for their salute as they always do wonderfully at the bridge. I'd also like to thank the Chief for putting the reef into the river. We continue to honor our veterans faithfully, and for those men and women that continue to serve, we thank them for their service. I'd also like to thank our DPW and Park and Rec teams for our last snow event we had, which was a multi-day event. I'd like to thank them for all of their hard work, as they do that each and every time, and we'd like to thank them for their work and efforts. I'd also like to thank the New Milford Chamber of Commerce, Executive Director Denise De Mostro, and the Chamber Board, the United Methodist Men's Group, and Santa for a wonderful tree lighting that we had. We had lots of people there. It just goes to show our character of our town. Also, congratulations to the Culinary School, they had their 41st graduation, and I'd like to thank the Executive Director, Don Hammacott, Chef Blythe, the staff and the boards and the Board of Directors for that. Also, today, we had another meeting of our opioid task force. I'd like to thank everyone that was involved in that again today, and we had some new members that actually joined as well. I will be talking to the Town Council in January about some of the updates that we have going on concerning our task force. With that, I'd like to end that by wishing everyone, real quickly, a very safe holiday season. For those, Merry Christmas, and for those celebrating Hanukkah, Happy Hanukkah as well. Thank you.
Okay. Item four, Consent Agenda, Motion to Approve Items 4A and 4B.
Any discussion on the consent agenda?
I'm just advising that I'll be recusing myself as I was not here for the meetings.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item five, we have a change here. These are going to be temporary appointments and reappointments for Item 5A and 5...all the way through, 5A only. The reason they're going to be temporary is because there was an error made in the start time of December the 1st. It should be January 31st, correct?
No, actually, the start date will be...Randy, can you...
February 1st.
That's for the permanent...
Oh, February, it can't be February.
Right.
But the temporary will be from now until February 1st.
Until January 31st.
I thought it was January 1st.
So, what we're...to make a long story short, I'm sorry for interrupting, Katie.
No, go right ahead.
So, in talking to Attorney DeBella, who can opine on this, when we had a charter change, the charter left out this particular set of appointments. So, what would happen is we would have a gap in commissions to serve. So, we have to do to fix it this time, am I correct?
Correct.
Randy, we have to do a temporary appointment from today's date until 1/31/19, so that these boards and commissions can continue to function.
Twenty.
Or twenty. Twenty, sorry.
Right.
We're missing a month here.
So, do we also then have to update the charter? So, the next time this doesn't happen again?
But not right now.
Randy?
What happened, Chris, and the Town Council, is that when they did the charter review, they redid the dates of effective appointment to February 1st.
Right.
What they didn't do is they didn't do a transition line. A transition line is simply, notwithstanding foregoing, any current appointment will not expire until January 31st, or such appointee shall serve temporarily from this date to this date. Didn't do that. So, in order not to have a gap, or what they call an advance, in each board or commission, the Town Council has authority under the charter, I mean, it's a remote thing, but it has authority under the charter to have temporary boards and commissions. Pursuant to that authority and the appointment of these individuals to permanent commissions, you can then appoint them temporarily within that plenary authority. So, you're really making up a gap, is all you're doing, and it's the same appointees. So, you won't have to correct the charter date, because in reality, this is not going to happen again.
Right.
It only happens when there's a charter. That's why you always have a transition provision when you do a charter, okay?
Thank you. One note to be made under Item 5A is under the 9/11 Committee. There is Cheryl A. Bonus, she is no longer a resident. That was not taken into account. So, just so you know, as I guess we'll call it a clerical, she should be removed or not considered. I don't know how you're going to state that. But anyway, so we have the 9/11 Committee, Commission on Aging, Alarm Appeals Board, Arts Commission, Kandahar Lake Authority, Conservation Commission, Ethics Commission, Historic Properties Commission, Pousatonic Regional Resources Recovery Authority, Pousatonic River Commission, Housing Code Enforcement, Housing Partnership, Lanesville Fire Substation, Library Board of Trustees, Municipal Citation Hearing Officer, Northville One Room School House Committee, Northwest Connecticut Public Safety Communication Center, Sewer Commission, Traffic Authority, Youth Agency, Film Commission, Parks and Recreation, and Pension Committee.
Second. Any discussion on the motion?
I still get 100% every year of sharehold, right?
Absolutely.
Being on these boards.
Yeah, no raise.
I just want to make sure.
No raise.
Counsel, one more.
So, we're going to be moving all these in one motion?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to note, I do have an objection to Paul Semansky on Park and Rec. Just feel that his business is too involved in too many things in town, and perhaps maybe there will be too many conflicts of interest.
Thank you. Any other discussions to Congress?
The only thing I want to say is, this is quite a list, and I think we're blessed as a town to have so many people that are willing to sacrifice their time, not too bad for the town.
And I appreciate everyone for all the donations that many of these people make, such as Mr. Semansky, who's donated hundreds of thousands of dollars in free work to this town for almost a decade.
Agreed.
Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion on Item 5B. This will be the appointments of all those that are listed under 5B, which would entail the Commission on the Arts, Ethics Commission, Youth Agency, Pension Committee, Parks and Recreation, Board of Finance and Zoning Board of Appeals, as each person is noted here on the agenda.
And the same dates, they would be temporary? Counsel, one more.
So, I also have a comment on the Board of Finance. Joe DiDagorio is apparently, as of this afternoon, is still unaffiliated. He's not a Democrat, and you have him listed as a done.
We'll change that to unaffiliated.
You're just going to change it right now? What?
It's just a typo.
It's a typo.
All right, well, also note my opposition to his name, as we did submit, the Democrats did submit the name, the Democratic name.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion?
I'm going to speak in favor of Mr. DiDagorio. He's got a lot of experience on this, he's very level-headed, and understands how money is earned and spent. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I would just, I served with Joe on the Board of Finance, and I thought he did his homework, did a good job, and I fully support him.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you.
Item six, Town Clerk's Office.
Well, we need to do the civil preparedness one.
Oh, my God, we did?
There's so many here, let's see. Which item is that?
Civil Preparedness Emergency Management Director, Brian Omen.
But that's part of 5A.
Yeah, but we didn't include his name. You didn't read civil preparedness.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't read it, you're right. But what I did say is, everybody listed on the agenda under 5A. So, for the record, please include civil preparedness and emergency management director, who serves co-terminus. That date of start and end is a little different, because that position serves co-terminus with the mayor, per Section 609 of the Charter.
Is that okay to do it that way, Randy?
It is.
Great. Thank you.
Sorry, but thank you, Tom, for catching that. Now, go to Item six, which is the Town Clerk's Office, reapointment of sub-registers, registrars of vital registers of vital statistics. Bonnie Butcher-Smith and Christopher Milano, both deserve December 1st, 2019, through November 30, 2023. I assume they do not fall under that other item, right?
This is all...
They are fine, yeah.
Okay. Randy? With how we're doing it? Okay. We have a first and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item number seven.
What? Did you have something there? Okay.
Item number seven, move to approve the request from the Zoning Board of Appeals for an additional $5,000 to be moved from legal other account number 1041390053101, and put into the ZBA Legal Fund account 1041390053107, or any other source recommended by the Finance Director to cover additional legal fees for an appeal.
Second. Randy, can you speak a little bit on that?
We're underbuided on all legal accounts, so it doesn't really matter where you take it from. But Director informed me today, I wasn't informed of the need for a transfer. I was asked how much is going to be necessary to complete the litigation on that case, that particular case. All the discovery, all the record return and the pre-trial hearings are done. So, the only thing that's left to be done is a trial, and that's on February, we're scheduled to do that February 20th. I anticipate that this appropriation will be more than enough to cover that preparation and the trial. I was asked that by W. E. O. Frollo.
So, we have a first and a second. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item eight, Commission on the Arts.
Just a point of clarification, Katie, real quick. Did you move to add the Sergeant of Arms to seven?
Yes, but there is a seven, there's no A on this, so we'll put you at the end. How about we move that item to number 12B?
There you go. The new Sergeant of Arms to 12.
Yep. The Commission on the Arts, motion to accept their application for road closure of the Southern Crossover. That will be on December 16th for the annual carol sing. Is there anybody here from the Arts Commission? No, we all know that Santa will come to town, and we'll all be on the bandstand singing carols. That's my motion.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Wait, Mike? Just a quick note. It would be nice if, when people come and want to do something in town, that they're actually here for the meeting, so that we can, you know, if we have questions, or, I mean, it's just a very simple road closure, it would be nice to see people come in front of the council, so we know who you are.
So, on number eight of our handout, some of the things that we asked of previous councils was a letter on behalf of the Commission, and then also, we have the road closure application where everybody signed it, Traffic Authority, and I believe, I believe it's the Chief as well.
The one thing that I always get concerned about is the store operators on the green and the time period that it gets closed for. So, it is nice when they can come here and explain why, if they need to close it for more than a day, or how many hours, that they come and explain why they need that, just so we can see. If they don't need that whole time, if they're just taking it to take it, it's nice to not close it, because I know that businesses do appreciate that, you know, so it is something that if they're doing it, they should...
What do you mean by they close it so they can get prepared for...
Correct, but sometimes people close it for more time than they actually should need or will need, just on the safe side, and that's not fair to them.
For example, they're talking 4:09, it's going to be closed here.
Yeah.
A lot of times, it's for setup and for break.
I know what it's for, but that's why I think what Mike's saying is, they should also be here, certainly have questions.
We'll ask them to come.
But, you know, it should be partially something, part of the application, that someone, their group representing comes before council, just in case we do have questions. I'm fine with this one, and it's done every year, and it's fine. I'm just saying, going forward, it's something new. It could be something that we...
Do you think we should try to enforce something like that, that they have to come?
I think it's a good idea. I'm not saying we say no because of it, but it's something that...
Because we did, as the mayor said, we did ask that in the past, but, you know, they're all volunteer organizations, I just don't know that they have people to come, but we certainly can ask them, yeah, I suppose.
I think you can encourage it.
You do, right, yeah.
If you're not in favor of the requirement, for the very reasons you stated.
Well, I'll say that to the Commission on the Arts next year. Please send someone, so I don't have to talk about your singing.
It's a fabulous event, we want everybody to attend, which is one of the other reasons why we've always encouraged folks to come here over the decades, to talk about their fabulous night.
I can't do it justice.
So, that's, it's not punitive, it's something to help where people come out.
I would also just point out, the letter from the Commission on the Arts to the Traffic Authority says, you want it to be blocked from 3 till 9.
3 to 9.
The application for road closure says 4 to 9, so that just...
They cut it down by an hour.
Okay, so 4 to 9 is the official.
Yep. Okay. You got it.
Item number nine...
You still got a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you'd, I have an okay.
Still trying. We have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Jesus, I wrote it too quickly. I just made an assumption. You know what that means. Item number nine, New Milford Police Department, we have a discussion of possible action concerning police captain position. I think our Chief is here.
See, he showed up.
Yeah.
And it's his day off, too.
And he'd close a road whenever he wants.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, good evening, council, importantly, good evening to our citizens. I'm very proud to be here tonight, representing the men and women of the New Milford Police Department. Very happy to introduce my two lieutenants, Lieutenant Bradner, Lieutenant Wheeler. Very proud of the work they do, and they're here tonight to show that we are a team, and we're in this together. I respectfully request tonight that we move transfer funds within the Police Department budget. I see a need within the Police Department. The lieutenants do an excellent job focusing on the Detective Bureau and the Patrol Bureau, respectively, but they've also been doing a heck of a job helping me with the administrative tasks that include grant writing, policy writing, training oversight and coordination, community policing and such. And I see a need, I see a need for a police captain to head the administrative division and oversee all these tasks. So, as I said, I would request movement of funds within the police budget. I'm looking to move $15,000 from the Evidence Tech line and $18,000 from the Sergeant's Salary Line into the Administrative Salary Line. This would help me to facilitate the hiring of a police captain. These funds are available due to a vacancy in the Sergeant's Salary Line that will not be filled, and the savings for a late hire of a high-risk navigator. The remaining funds are in the Admin Salary Line from the accrual savings earlier in this fiscal year.
We also, just for the edification of the Town Council, I've asked our Finance Director to speak with the Chief concerning the ability within the department to do exactly what the Chief says, and Greg?
Yes, we discussed it, and I agree.
Katie?
Chief, just a question. So, I see how you're going to transfer some money, and you have some savings. Okay, so let's move to next year.
Yes.
What do you think will happen then?
Next year, we're going to have a vacancy. There will be an unfilled vacancy next year, and that vacancy will account for over $80,000. I will be coming to the council for an additional approximately $15,000 to continually fund this police captain position.
Okay, and one other thing, the original letter had that you were going to take it from High Risk Navigator line, but you mentioned the Evidence Tech. Which, is that which one is it?
It's just a misnomer, but it's for the same position.
No, I understand, but which is it? Because I have an account number here, and is the account number the same for Evidence?
Right now, in the budget, it reads Evidence Tech.
Is that the account number that's on there?
Yes, that's the correct account number.
Not High Risk Navigator? Okay.
Mike?
You said that you're going to have to come back next year to ask for another $15,000?
Yes, that's correct.
Why don't you just redo your budget, so it's accounted for, and then we can approve or not approve the budget? Is that...
Right, that's also a consideration.
I mean, that seems like the best...
And that seems logical.
So, just to make sure, from a budget perspective, we're saying, next year, to keep the position...
Yes.
We'll need to add 15K to the budget.
Yes, it'll be approximately that number.
What, are there any specific metrics that you can, that you'll be able to point to, that when this person gets up and running, better service or something that they're to show?
Right. One of the big needs I see within the Police Department is policies and procedures. I have started the accreditation process. We'll be able to gauge our process or our progress with the accreditation standards. So, that will be one matrix that I'll use. In addition, I want to have that position applying for grants, so I would like to see an increase in grants, obviously. Community policing is another area that I want to measure improvement. We've done a heck of a job this year with community policing. We have that philosophy installed or instilled within our department, and I want to consider that. I want to add a citizen police academy. I want to start a police explorer program to benefit our youth in town. So, I'll measure the success of those programs to this position.
So, I, and I don't know when is the right time, whether it's budget season or what have you, but going forward, understanding, you know, just to show the taxpayers, hey, we're putting out this extra funds, this is what...
Correct. I'm sure in a number of months, we would be able to show progress, but certainly within a year.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you.
Walter?
Well, it's, I don't know, to me, this is common sense. It's not a want, it's a need, do it.
Mike?
Question for the Chief.
Yes.
For the grants, what kind of grants are you applying for, and why wouldn't we just turn to the Town Grant Writer for that kind of help?
Yes, of course, the Town Grant Writer is a resource that we have utilized, and we plan to continue to utilize. So, we obviously have to let her know and allow her to understand our focus. I have found that traffic enforcement and traffic-related issues are a big concern in town, and they're certainly one of my high priorities. So, I would like to focus more so on those types of grants, where allow our officers to conduct enforcement, conduct education in the community on traffic-related issues. We had a good start this year. We got involved with the DOT grant process. We had two grants. One grant allowed us to enforce traffic-related issues. Another allowed us to get out into the public and do more community policing. So, those two areas, I'd like to double down on, focus more on with the grants. Great, thank you.
Again, I support your request. I'm not about to second-guess the Police Department, that's your expertise, so thanks for coming forward with it.
Thank you, sir.
And Randy, I just want to make sure that this happens to dovetail into the police captain position. I just want to make sure, verbiage-wise, we're still on task for our agenda. But as the Finance Director will talk a little bit later in his finance update, when you do look at the sheet, you will see some overruns in the dispatch overtime that we've been talking about for months. And I just want everybody to be clear, we are cognizant, the Chief is cognizant of that, and we are working on that by, we've hired, as we talked about before, the per diem contracted employee that can help mitigate those costs. So, we'll be able, am I correct, Chief, within your budget, to be able to handle all of this within the budget as it is today?
Yes, that's the plan. And in addition, the two lines I speak of, this police sergeant line and also a police officer line, due to a deployment in the military, will be unfilled through the rest of the budget year.
And also, you're getting some funding back, correct, from the federal government and from the state?
Yes.
That's actually going to be helpful as well?
We just received our first payment from the state. It was a $2,500 stipend. We're going to receive that $2,500 stipend on a monthly basis, and that's going to go right into our overtime line.
And the stipend, so everyone is aware, the Town Council is for...
It's for our involvement in the statewide Narcotics Task Force.
So, go.
Just a quick question, to piggyback on what Katie said. So, it says, High Risk Navigator line, is it going to be changed?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so when it comes in front of us, it's going to read that instead of Evidence?
I'm going to make the motion and correct that typo.
Okay, great. I just wanted to thank the Chief and all the officers. I know you guys were out there in the cold on Saturday, you did a great job with the colds, collecting stuff.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. It's the team's effort that makes all those things happen.
And the police presence in the last, since you've come in especially, it's been great. I've heard nothing but good things about you and your officers, so...
Thank you, I appreciate it, we appreciate it.
Tom?
I'm going to dovetail onto Doug. It's been amazing to hear, to meet your officers on the street, see the morale is 180 degrees away from where it was. People are engaged. My constituents and my friends and family members love the presence, they love the interaction, the friendliness, the team spirit has been fantastic, and I can't...
I appreciate it. I'm so proud of my team. I'm proud to hear compliments like that. I hear them every day, and I pass those compliments on. We're all in it together, and we're a team, us, the Police Department, and the community.
We can tell you over here, we're incredibly proud.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you.
Okay, so, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request from the Police Department to transfer $15,000 from the Evidence Tech account, line 10420100-51011, transfer to Administrative Salary Line, 10420100-51000.
Second.
Well, there's a second request. Also, to transfer $18,000 from the Sergeant's Line, 10420100-51004, to the Administrative Salaries Line, 1042010051000.
Second, second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you for your care.
Thank you, guys. Merry Christmas, Chief.
Item 10.
Left ten minutes. Welcome aboard.
Motion to accept the donation of approximately 25 acres of property at 8 Kent Road, tax map 28.4, Lot 8, known as Native Meadows. And this donation comes from the Northwest Conservation District Incorporated to the Town of New Milford. It's to be used for passive recreation with deed restrictions to that effect.
Second.
This is for setting up the town meeting, correct, Randy?
I do recall that I prepared the restrictions and provided them to the, to the, to the council. The restrictions have been approved by the Attorney for, for the Northwest District. So the last call that I got was last, was Wednesday, before Thanksgiving, when they said that please go ahead and prepare the deed to send to the Executive Director and they will execute what needs to be done. But I said, I can't do that until we have a town meeting.
So my motion is to set the town meeting date?
Correct. Yeah, the Board of Finance, I mean, I'm sorry, correction. The Planning Commission has already approved the 824 referral.
Right. And that would be?
Less, no less than one, no less than, no greater than two.
First meeting in January?
So is it the first meeting in January, Randy? Would that be your opinion?
Yeah.
So we could add that to the motion.
To town meeting to be held on the first Town Council Meeting in January of 2020, which would be January the 13th?
13th.
So just to be clear, I think we've talked about this before, accepting this property, maintenance does not fall on Park and Rec. It's not going to hinder their budget at all or create more work for them? Is that right?
Correct. So we have a summer program with the Northwest Investment Board and the students or the kids that get paid get a lot of work on trails this year, the Antinogs and the towns, and they would be tasked with doing those particular paths within Native Meadows. As we talked about prior, what is great about that is the town then gets this concurrent piece that we can attach to one and a half mile trail that would be in there, onto the bridge, going across the bridge, connecting to the River Trail as today. Then that River Trail, part of it could then go from DPW, because we've already got the funding in place from last year's budget, to create the sidewalk that will go up Patriots' Way all the way into the downtown. So now we'll have the ability to have the connectivity that everybody wants with the river and with the downtown. And people then can walk into the downtown with that one and a half mile loop, add on the one, the one and a half miles that would be in Native Meadows plus the river walk that currently is now. And I believe in the beginning, our walk even there will be bigger than Brookfield's.
So we'll be.
That's a big walk.
And we can continue on, absolutely.
That's a big walk.
With our connectivity. So I think it's a great win for the town.
Certainly is.
And if there was no second to that, I'll second to that.
Is it at 6:45 on January 3rd?
Yes, 6:45.
Thank you.
Those properties still will be turned over to Park and Rec for their review in case somebody wants to do an event or something like that?
No event. It is strictly.
They won't have any jurisdiction on it?
It is a deed restriction to the effect that is for passive recreation only.
Okay.
That means you can walk on it and you can't party on it.
Okay.
So keep that in mind.
I understand there are some projects that the Boy Scouts like to do and maybe they own those properties so that we say.
They can do what they've done before. They can contact the mayor's office and we'll set them up.
As long as they don't party, you know?
No partying.
Mike? Okay. Any other discussion?
I just, I just want to say it's a great acquisition for the town, great for the residents. Very happy to see it's moving through.
It's even better than we even have to pay for.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
May I insert our additional agenda item prior to the Finance Director, Mayor? Would that be all right?
That's okay with the council?
Okay.
Yes, it was unfortunately left off the agenda, but it was to nominate a Sergeant at Arms for our council. Would someone like to make a motion to nominate someone?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Doug Skelly, Second Sergeant at Arms, for second terms.
And Mr. Skelly was a Sergeant at Arms the last council?
Did a great job.
So any other discussion on the appointment?
No, I second it.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Doug.
Now we got it done. So now we move from item 10B to 11, which is an update from Greg Ospow, Finance Director.
Doug, do you have a uniform, Doug?
No.
Just a red suit. I borrowed. Good evening, everyone. This is a report as of October 31st. Revenues are at 50.4% of budget. On a straight-line basis, we would expect to be at 33.3%. Tax collections are at 55.3% of budget overall, with current taxes at 51, 56.1%. It appears that both interest income and stiff interest are, despite my earlier concerns, running above budget at 42.3% and 48.5% respectively. I will continue to monitor these accounts. Land use revenues are at a robust 68.4% of budget. Building permits are also running well ahead of budget at 74.5% of budget. There are no areas of concern at this point in time with revenues. Expenditures. Expenditures are at 39.1% of budget with encumbrances. Without encumbrances, they are at 32.6% of budget, which is right on target on a straight-line basis. The police department is at 34.8% of budget with encumbrances and 34% without. Overtime and dispatchers overtime are at 48.7% and 81.7% of budget respectively. This leaves no doubt that dispatchers overtime will certainly go over budget as I had predicted in December. An adjustment of some sort will have to occur in this account. I've spoken with the Chief, who's informed me that one training candidate began last evening and another full and one part-time dispatcher will finish training in approximately six weeks. This will slow the rate of overtime, but not eliminate it. Recycling overtime is at 63.6% of budget. This is offset by salary savings, which currently is running at 26.8% of budget. That is approximately 6% under budget. In summary, on a cash basis, revenues are at $51,143,899.04 and expenditures are at $31,342,703.88, leaving the town with a positive cash flow of $19,801,195.16.
Any questions for Greg?
I've got a few, Greg. So I've got a few questions, Greg. So a lot of the areas in both revenue and expenditures where we're ahead of the 30% is generally, is it a timing issue where things hit at different times of the year?
Where you, you know, you'll see in some categories in revenue where there's 0% collected and most of those are like state revenues and they come in different times of the year.
So specifically on the revenue side, land use, building permits are way ahead. Do you expect us to go get more?
That was a surprise to me, frankly. I know building permits, there was a big project. May I, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I was going to say, so here's the great news. So if you're using year-to-date, year-over-year, last year, we were in the construction of about $9 million. As of this year, we're $31 million.
Okay.
So that's new projects, projects coming to fruition. So town's growing.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's, you know, I'm not saying, I'm not questioning it, I just want to understand where we might be at the end of the year and that, the sanitary permits is also way up. So I assume that's all connected. On the expenditure side, one thing I noticed with the probate court, they're at about 50% of expense budget, but we haven't seen any revenue yet. Is that an issue with it? Is that a cash flow?
No, we're going to bill them for their rent. We'll get it all.
We do it in one shot?
Okay.
And for expenditures, I see Fire Department and Dog Pound are 50, 60%?
Right, they normally, yeah, they normally ask for half and half.
Okay, gotcha. Ambulance is the same and Commission on the Arts is the same?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, just timing?
Yes.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
And then Councilman Lawson had asked me for some figures today, so I'd like to give those figures to you. So he asked for material and supplies, how we are currently. So our budgeted number for this year is $536,000. So year-to-date, we've expended $3,200. We've encumbered $272,475. Leaves an opening of $263.25, so I think so far we're in pretty good shape.
I would say so.
And then as far as the gas itself, we talked about before, so our budgeted number is $407,405. We've expended $115,635.86, so that's at 28.4% so far for the year. So we're about six months in already, so we're looking pretty good so far still.
Thank you. Just look out there.
Absolutely. I'm with you.
How many events are you going to have?
Supposed to get more, we're supposed to get more storm event, more than likely Tuesday night into Wednesday?
No.
I hope I do.
I hope we can take another day home. You're not seconding that motion.
Dave, should it happen? I know you know it's not going to, but should it happen?
The resolution.
Could you just pop over and shovel my walks?
Will you take the kids?
That number sees a lot as well because built into that gas budget is also heating fuel.
Yeah, that's.
Yep.
So that's, you're going to see seasonal fluctuations in that account.
Absolutely.
One other thing, so the other thing I looked at on the IT budget, I know we've had a lot of issues in that. How do you, in terms of capital or expenses in the IT group, do you think the budget is safe there?
I guess that's going to be addressed in executive session.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other discussion for Greg?
Thank you.
Okay, motion to move to executive session.
What, the economic development? Are we going to table that?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were going to table that.
Okay. Could someone table that?
I'd like to make a motion to table the economic development update until the economic development director is available in January.
Second.
There are too many questions. We'd really like to have her here to talk about it.
Absolutely. Any other discussion on tabling?
Well, I do appreciate the 24% to us earlier. I do appreciate that. And if there's an update on it that can happen, then that would be wonderful.
Excellent. I'll make sure it gets updated.
Well, the, our economic development director is to report to us once a month.
Correct.
The second meeting of each month.
Correct.
So there should definitely be some update between the beginning of December and the end of January.
Yes. Randy?
May the, with your indulgence, may the Chief, Chief Giroud be invited into executive session?
He's on there.
Oh, he is on there?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on, on tabling? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session.
There we go. Second. And I'd like to call in Attorney DeVella, IT Director David Watson, Personnel Director Greg Valero, and Finance Director Greg Ospow.
And the Chief.
And Chief of Police Spencer.